Two stand for the flag allegiance.
They pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wanted to make a special shout out. This week is National Police Day, uh, Week, and last week was National Nurses Week. So to all the nurses and all the police out there, we want to recognize you for all your hard work, so thank you. With that, we will move into the consent agenda. Consent agenda comprises of approval of minutes for March 14th, 21st, April 4th, and April 18th, approval of payroll, May 1st and May 15th, approval of claims, April 20th, May 4th, and May 11th, treasurer's report, March 31st, and weights and measures monthly report, March 16th through April 15th. I will open that to the floor. Motion to approve. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, now we move into Memorial Opera House, Scott McDonald. Scott is here. I'm going to have you read the names this time.
Sure thing.
Because we got a little... How you doing, Scott?
I'm well, thanks.
Good to see you.
Good morning. Thanks. Okay, we have 12 contracts here, uh, yes, and they include our 2018 production of The Hunchback of Notre Dame, South Shore Orchestra Artist Agreement from May 24th, South Shore Orchestra Artist Agreement from May 29th, Bobby Sukabachkov, two artistic service agreements...
He makes that sound so easy.
Well, you know him. Jennifer Lundeen, an artistic service agreement, Tricia Sabachik, Andrew Flash, Kurt Gillens. Those are all artistic service agreements in regards to Josephine Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat, the Westwood House Venue Rental Agreement for next year, Alexis Bretsekes and Patty Schaffner.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, the artistic services agreements and venue rental agreements for the Memorial Opera House. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And I wanted to mention for additions for Joseph, they had over 80 people come and audition, so...
Yeah, we start rehearsals...
It really leads to some excellent talent, great show.
We're thrilled. We have rehearsals starting on Thursday, and there's a lot of children involved, and it's going to be a really great community experience, I think.
Well, you've got a good head of steam going down there. Let's keep it going.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott. Now we'll move into new business with the commissioners. Uh, we have an introduction of interns, uh, for Highway Stormwater GIS. Bob Thompson, why don't you come forward and do your thing? We're excited about this, by the way. I know I am, so...
All right. We have hired six civil engineering college interns to do work for us this year, plus us, um, two GIS interns. We have seven of the eight here today. Unfortunately, Grace Rowan, uh, one of our GIS interns, was not able to make it, so I'm going to introduce everybody to you. The whole idea of this is what we're going to do is going around, um, we have two crews that are going to be working in the stormwater, and we're going to be going around the watersheds to actually inspect all of the infrastructure that we have within the watershed and gather the data for us as far as the size of the structure, what stream it's on, the location of it, because all of us, they're going to have pads with them in the field that is going to be doing all of this in real time, and it's going to be downloading in it and it's going to be going into our GIS system. Uh, we're going to be able to monitor real time where they're at, as far as that goes. Any data that they're putting into this system is going to go into GIS. The whole idea of this is to get this up on our GIS system, so all of the information is just a click away. I guess to explain also, I did this a few years ago, um, with, when I was down with the Highway Engineering Department. We won't say how many years ago that was. No, it was over 20 years ago. We did the same program, and I want to do another interesting item with that, too. We did locations of all of the structures. Why are we doing it? Again, obviously, to get it in the GIS on that, but also the lifespan of these structures changes, and we need to figure out, you know, hopefully they're going to catch, you know, some bad items out there, or hopefully they will not, but if they do, they'll report back to us. Uh, the other section is, is going to be with the transportation side, with the Pazer system that we have, the management system. We're going to be actually going through and auditing what we have on that, measuring the roads, also checking the drainage along the roads and giving the criteria for that, um, and putting that also into the management system in GIS real time. We do have that on GIS now, but like I said, we're going to be auditing, and if there's any corrections that we need, it's going to be done in real time. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce all of our interns here.
And make sure we give the school they're representing, too.
Yes, I will. All right. We have, you guys want to just kind of walk on up here?
Next t-shirt.
I'm just going to go by the front end. Yeah, we did get the t-shirts. We have Tanya here. Tanya is a Baperazo University, uh, civil engineering major. Tanya just completed your junior year, correct? Next year, sophomore year. Okay. Um, well, Tanya is a foreign exchange. She is from China, northern provinces. Macy, Macy is a dual degree major with St. Mary's College, um, and also Notre Dame University with civil engineering. Paul, Purdue University, um, civil engineering. Reed, he is meteorology, just graduated meteorology with VU, correct? And is very interested in GIS, so Reed is going to be a, one of our GIS interns that's going to be taking all of this data. And then next, we have Owen. Owen, um, is going to be leaving here immediately and going to take his last final at VU. Owen is, um, a civil engineering major at VU. And we have Morgan. Morgan is also a civil engineering major at VU. And then we have Hannah at the end. Hannah is also going to be running and taking that same final. Hannah is a civil engineering major with, uh, VU. I, one of the things I wanted to point out, which I think is very interesting out of this, we have six civil engineering majors on that, and two males. Um, what I find interesting is when I did this in 95, I know, number of years back, just a few years back, okay, maybe it might have been earlier than 95, it might have been 94. Um, at that time, I did have a number of VU civil engineering students and also, um, a couple Purdue students, too, on that, so VU's a great, um, source over there for students. At that time, out of the six, I only had one female. Um, so I had five gentlemen doing that. Now, it's amazing how the tides have turned, and out of the six, I, we have four young ladies, civil engineering majors, and then two young gentlemen doing that, so I needed to point that out and plug that out, so...
Well, I know we're very excited. Um, I know a lot of people in the county really haven't paid much attention to our movement towards a better stormwater system and structure and division that we have here in the county. Um, again, we're trying to make GIS more relevant, and now that we are responsible for this entire system, uh, what, uh, what this requires is data, and that's what these folks are going to be going out and getting for us this year. So, um, we're looking forward to all the information that you're going to bring to us, and it's going to make our system better, and, uh, we look forward to it. It's, uh, we're excited about this, so... Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a request for additional appropriations for Fund 1172 Subfund, number 2294, major moves in the amount of $317,197 to account 3950 contractual services to reappropriate matching funds for an RDA airport grant originally approved in April 2016 but not extended. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, again. Uh, number three, a request for an additional appropriation from Fund 4903, hospital proceeds in the amount of $517,000 to account 3950 contractual services to pay for ambulance services. If some of you probably don't remember, but our CCD fund was cut by the state this year, so this is an additional appropriation to shore that up because of the funding that was cut by the state. Uh, I'm going to open it up to the board members. Any questions, comments?
Let's do, when you do, when we finally have a motion, a second, do a roll call vote.
Oh, okay.
We need unanimous. Okay?
Has the council voting on this tonight?
I believe so.
Yeah.
It's on the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second with discussion.
We have a motion and a second.
Is that 517,000, is that reflective of, uh, as a result of these, these negotiations that we've had here recently?
Yeah, the 517 number gets us to the end of the year.
Okay.
But for the negotiations, that number would have been $300,000 more to get us to the end of the year.
Okay. So would we want the auditor to call? Roll. Thank you, Madam Auditor.
Okay, Commissioner Goode?
Yes.
Commissioner Blaney?
Yes.
And Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Three to zero, affirmative.
Motion carries. Uh, number four, DLZ, Larson-Danielson Payment Application Number Eight, in the amount of $58,833.54 for the new animal shelter. Stephen, how you doing today?
Good.
Good.
So I'm Stephen from Kowski with DLZ, just to present to you payoff number eight from Larson-Danielson for the animal shelter in the amount of $58,833.54. So this is, reflects about, including the retainage, about 93 percent. Uh, they're clearly beyond that. They've just submitted payoff number nine, which is in the process of your review, so, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain those.
I was out there yesterday. Building looks great, so we're getting ready to start moving some animals here pretty soon, so...
I would offer that, I know, um, there's a county in north, I'm sorry, southwest Michigan that has already visited the animal shelter, because they've done good things. So the word is spreading throughout the region and elsewhere throughout the state and the adjoining states, so a compliment.
Tell them there's a copy fee.
There you go.
Well, and also, before we move those animals, the shelter's doing a reduced rate for adoptions to make it easier to adopt out animals, so we don't have to move as many, so anybody looking for a dog, now's a good time. Or a cat.
Or a cat. Stephen, this pretty much concludes. Not that we, not that I don't want to see you again, but...
Yeah, from our services, we did do a punch list. There's a follow-up to confirm all the punch list items are completed, and then there's also some closeout documents, including warranties that we'll be reviewing, but in terms of our onsite, and we're always available as needed, when requested, but our services are sort of waning down now.
Okay. Well, I'd like to open up to the floor for the commissioners. Any more additional comments, questions? Do we have a motion? Second. We have a motion and a second to approve application number eight in the amount of $58,833.54 for the new animal shelter. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
See you along the trails. Amendment number one to Plan Document and Summary Plan Description for Porter County Government, Company Physical Through Workforce Health.
These are, both these, number five and six on our agenda are both recommended by our current service provider, R.E. Sutton. I would, I've reviewed them, and I would recommend the commissioners approve them to the amendments to the plan document and summary.
Can we approve both?
You can.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for amendment number one, and amendment number three to Plan Document, uh, for the summary plan for prescription government, uh, for the Porter County Government Health Plan, one for company physical through workforce health, the other for organ transplants. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Animal Shelter Ordinance Revision, is that Tony, or is that?
That's me, but I can...
That's Scott.
So on the Animal Shelter Ordinance Revision, basically what that amounts to is, through the cooperative effort of the commissioner's office and the Sheriff's Department, we were moving the, uh, the oversight of the animal control officers to, uh, the Animal Shelter Director, so there's some, just some minor tweaks to our existing code to allow that to happen. Beyond that, the only other tweaks to the code or ordinance was to, um, on the process on when, when we actually hold dogs and the process to get those back to the owners and who they pay, but no significant changes as far as timing or money. Basically, one is just to put the Animal Shelter Director in charge of the animal control officers, and the other was just to kind of clarify when and who gets paid when dogs get impounded, so...
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I, just here, yesterday, I think it was yesterday, I had a long conversation with, uh, with Tony in regard to a complaint that her department had been dealing with, and it, somehow it ended up, um, getting to me, and then I involving myself in it, that, uh, but through that process, what, what I've learned is, um, you know, our, our animal control officers are, you know, they're occasionally citing violators, however, those tickets aren't being collected. Uh, there, there seems to be no enforcement mechanism, um, to, uh, like, a better term, force those who have been cited to pay their tickets. And in other words, there seems to be this, a large outstanding number of citations sitting out there that, that aren't being collected, and, um, uh, there, there also seems, appears to be an issue of, of, uh, when, when cases are brought to the prosecutor's office, those cases aren't being prosecuted. And I haven't had the opportunity to talk to, uh, Brian Genzel yet, but, uh, you know, if we have ordinances on, on the books that our people are enforcing, we're paying them to enforce, but they're not, you know, they're handing out citations, and those citations aren't being collected, people are just ignoring them, and then, you know, nothing's done down the line by the prosecutor's office to, to endorse those, uh, those fines, we're just spinning our wheels.
Well, I like that point.
It's a double-edged sword, because, um, there's two different things that we were talking about there. One is, if we have a dog running at large, ordinance violation ticket is something different than if the animal, animal control is sending up a dangerous dog, or a dog bite, or, uh, neglect, or something like that to the prosecutor's office. It is, to some extent, true that if we write tickets and they're getting prosecuted from the sense of ran through the system, they're having hearings, they're getting defaulted, and they're getting judgment liens, um, so if anything were to occur, they have to pay them, but going, what normally, if you were doing a traffic ticket, as my analogy, the, what gets people to the, you know, to the court's office to pay their ticket eventually is the fact that their driver's license got suspended if they didn't pay the ticket. On dogs running at large, tickets, those don't do the same thing, so ultimately, what ends up happening is they end up with a judgment lien that's recorded at the, at the, at the courthouse, and so if they ever, you know, buy a piece of real property or something like that, or sell, you know, it gets paid that way, but there isn't enforcement beyond that. The other issue has more to do with neglect and dangerous dogs when it comes to the actual prosecutor's office and their prosecution of those issues.
Well, I guess, my question is, is are, are we, are we handing down judgment liens on those?
Yes.
On those cases where they just...
Every, every one of them.
Ignore them.
Every one of them.
And then when they do pay their fine, where does that money end up?
Well, right now, if they get, if they pay the fine, eventually what happens is is the courts take their court costs and fines, and the rest, we have funds set up here. The rest comes here through the funds that we have set up for the animal shelter or for the animal patrol, not animal shelters, actual animal patrol.
So when a citation is written, we actually receive a portion of that fine that's been paid?
The fine is ours, the court costs is the court's.
But it does end up back with us, as you're saying?
When they're actually paid.
When they're paid, yeah. Okay.
How do other counties handle that, do you know? I mean, it's just...
My guess is other counties are going through the same thing we are, because you're, I mean, what do you do other than, you know, levy some kind of lien on their property? What else? You're not going to lock them up for it.
No.
I, I think, what I would suggest here is that maybe Commissioner Biggs, if you could maybe pull a meeting together with, uh, the animal shelter Tony, I think it would be good to have our new, uh, Animal Control, who is now under the direction of Tony, and I think what, and maybe the county prosecutor. I think it'd be a good time to maybe sit down and have a meeting, and let's go rework through all these, uh, these procedures and everything else, just so we get everybody on the same page. We now have, you know, the same guys, but they're under new direction, um, and new focus, so I think it'd be a good time where we all get together and sit down and meet and see if we can work through this and have an understanding of how we're going to move forward. Does that sound like a good solution?
Yeah, I wonder if they could discuss maybe hiring a collection agency that would maybe take a portion of tickets that aren't getting paid.
That's possible. Yep.
But I, I do, I do think that's a good idea, that, that the director and with Brian and, and myself, we meet, because if we're, we're, we're expected to put together cases that they can prosecute, our people are going, need to understand exactly what elements of that investigation are critical for prosecution, so, um, we need to get with them to find out what that is.
Okay. We'll make that happen. Uh, for the ordinance revision, though, what I have to do right now is I need to, um, close this meeting right now. We're going to open this up to a public meeting, and we're going to hear, uh, we're going to offer, first of all, I'd like to offer up anybody in the audience that is for this revision of, of the ordinance to come forward. Second time, I'm calling for anybody that wants to come and speak in favor of this revision ordinance, ordinance revision. Third and final time, I want to give anybody the opportunity to come up and speak for this ordinance revision. With that said, now we'll move to, like, to open up the floor for anybody to come and speak against this ordinance revision, going once. Again, have anybody come forward to speak in opposition of this ordinance revision, opportunity number two. Third and final time, I'd like to offer anybody in the audience that's willing to come forward to speak against the ordinance for revision, uh, the ordinance revision for the animal shelter. With that, I'll close the public meeting and open up the floor to the commissioners. This is first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve on first reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Animal Shelter Ordinance Revision on first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This will be second reading, will be on our next month's agenda. Uh, now we're going to move to a letter to, to the Service Transportation Board regarding the Great Lakes Basin Railroad. With that, I'd like to turn that, uh, over to Commissioner Blaney to read the letter into our minutes, so, uh, everybody knows what we're trying to say.
Happy to. Dear Service Transportation Board, it's Porter County Board of Commissioners, prepared, adopted, and paid for a professional written submission on the environmental impact of the proposed Great Lakes Basin Railroad. It has now come to our attention that a toll road was always part of the plan. We find this bait-and-switch tactic very troubling. Hundreds, if not thousands, of Lake Porter and La Port residents prepared and attended the environmental impact public meetings. The residents were not given the opportunity to discuss, or the opportunity to discuss, we have an extra opportunity to discuss, and that's what we need to take out, or the opportunity to provide feedback on the environmental impacts a 2,000-foot-wide transportation corridor, complete with rail and toll road, would inflict. Also, that's a toll road. We find this toll road addition to the plan after the public environmental impact meetings were completed dubious at best. The purpose of public meetings is to allow the chance to speak and be heard. The Porter County Board of Commissioners formally requests the environmental impact meetings be held again, as to allow public comments on the total planned project. Respectfully submitted, all of us.
Any other addition or additional comments, or anything else from other board members?
I think that the letter hits, hits all the main points. I mean, they, this toll road now is part of the, their proposal. They've changed their proposal. In my opinion, they should start right back at square A. It, it changes everything.
A 2,000-foot-wide transportation corridors drastically differ than a 200-foot-wide rail corridor.
Well, yeah.
Zero on...
Yeah, I think from our perspective, we felt as a board that we needed to, um, make, make this public comment, and that, um, you know, we followed the process, we've been following the process for the last year, when this thing just sort of came out of nowhere, and, uh, you know, now that they're getting to the point where they're ready to submit their final, their final plan, and then they throw the toll road into it, and I know everything that we looked at from the county's perspective with regards to drainage, highway infrastructure, everything else, uh, we were not looking at this through the lens of having a 2,000-foot corridor going through there. And so what we're saying is, we, we need to have the right to go back and relook at this all over again, because they, they changed the game on us.
Well, it truly, like Alar said, it truly is a bait-and-switch. They baited us with the railroad, switch it to a toll road.
So... Well, I would like to make a motion, being, I probably shouldn't, huh?
Yeah, you can.
I can. I'll make the motion to approve the letter.
Okay.
Second.
Third.
Yep. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The letter goes out. Um, next on the list is the Memorial Opera House liquor liability policy. I'll turn that over to Scott, and he can let all of you know how we are continually saving the county money.
So shortly, or a couple months ago, we had to redo the Expo liquor liability. We've got quotes on that, that ended up going to Samuelson Insurance Agency in Portage. We swing back around now, and the Memorial Opera House also needed theirs to be renewed. We were able to add that to our existing liability policy at the Expo Center. The increase would be $250 per year to that premium, the, the overall umbrella premium would remain unchanged, so, um, we got some other quotes. Obviously, not everyone else had the opportunity to be able to add it to the existing policy. Uh, the other quotes were $1,000 or more, $1,100, so this is significantly less than I think anyone else could even come close to, so, um, I think at this point, we were able to do both of those for Expo and Memorial Opera House for half of what we did last year, so...
Thanks for writing all that down, Scott.
Yep. And again, just for clarity purposes, what we did is, instead of having two liquor liability policies, we just added the other one as a rider onto the other policy and saved a bunch of money. So those are the kind of things that we're doing up here on the insurance, just trying to, um, find dollars under the rug wherever we can, and without minimizing the coverage for the, for the, for the county, so...
And the Memorial Opera House should thank Expo for paying for their liquor liability insurance, so that's, that's a...
Yeah, you guys too much. Thank you, Robert Teague, Matt, out there. Open up the floor. Future. Yeah, open up the floor, uh, to the commissioners for the liquor liability insurance policy.
I'll move.
So we have a motion? Second. And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number 10, Foundation... Number 10, Foundation Earning Fund. We are going to skip that and we're going to address that at our next meeting. Then we go into Clerk Karen Martin, Attorney Ethan Low and Election Board President David Bings, please come forward. A legal services agreement with Attorney Ethan Low of Blassey, Tabor, Bosick and Hartman LLC to provide legal services for 2017 to the Porter County Election Board and Board of Registration. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Take it away.
We're before you today for a renewal of Ethan's legal services agreement for 2017. There hasn't been any change in the dollar amount or any of the terms. It's the same agreement we've carried forward for the last probably, probably eight years, I would say it's been that long. I don't think there's been any change or reflection, so.
Any questions from the board? Motion to approve. We have a motion and a second to approve Ethan Low's, Attorney Ethan Low's contract for the Election Board President, for the Election Board and Board of Registration. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Next, Health Department. Keith Latta, Director Nancy Mathina, Office Manager and Attorney Dave Hollenbeck. An ordinance revising the Porter County Board of Health fee structure. This again is first reading. Good morning.
First of all, I think. Scott and I should lobby for a lawyer appreciation week.
Good luck.
That's going to take some real education.
It's like a politician appreciation.
Yeah, that's never. I can see those Hallmark cards.
On a more serious note, we are here today because of our ongoing effort at the Health Department and the Board of Health to try to correlate the fees that we charge for services against the cost of providing those services. This is an effort to free up as much money as possible from the general fund and from the health fund to do other things. So we monitor this probably with not as much regularity as we, we should or could. But we're here today regarding a proposed modification that has been unanimously recommended by the Board of Health for your consideration, that would raise the birth certificate fee, the death certificate fee, the paternity affidavit fee, and the affidavit of amendment fee to more closely show what the costs of providing those services are. Even with the increase, we are still toward the bottom half of the pack by comparative counties in terms of what they charge. The birth certificate would go from six to eight dollars. The death certificate would go from nine to 10 dollars. The paternity affidavit from 25 to 30 dollars, and the affidavit of amendment from 25 to 30 dollars as, as well. We did study this and looked at our costs. The birth and death certificate fees for us have not raised in over 10 years. The birth, the death certificate fee did go up $2 in 2013, but that was because the legislature, in their wisdom, told all counties we had to collect $2 to go into the corner education fund. So we did not see any of that revenue in 2013. So we're here asking the commissioners' consideration for what we believe to be rather modest increases in the fees we charge, so that they can more directly reflect the costs of providing those services. And Nancy, who is in charge of this part of our department, is here to answer any questions. And of course, Keith and Martin behind me is the Chairman of the Board of Health.
I'll, my question is, where, where does, where do these fees go? Do they go into a fund, David? I'm sure they do.
The Health Department pursuant to law has a freestanding fund. These fees go into that fund to help, in fact, when we do the annual budget, your auditor then estimates, this would go into miscellaneous revenue. And then that reduces what the tax rate has to be in order to fund the Health Department. But these are dedicated fees that go into the health fund. It's not part of the general fund.
And do we have a balance on what that fund is?
The auditor can probably provide us with that figure.
If I could get on the system, I could.
That's, okay. We can, this is first reading, so we can follow up on that at a later time. I didn't mean to push you on the spot, Ricky.
I know it's, it's, their fund is doing well. I mean, they're not running in the negative.
And then what is, what usually do you spend out of that department that comes out of that fund?
That funds 100% of the Health Department costs for the county.
So it's self-funded?
Yes.
Gotcha.
It has its own tax rate, to the extent the tax rate's needed after these miscellaneous revenues are, and we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're able to save the county through keeping fees correlated to costs.
Did you say that depending on, on the total amount collected in fees such as this throughout the course of the year, that, that has the ability to lower the, the tax?
Right. Jim, what happens is, we turn in a budget to you every year. That budget is fully funded out of the health fund. We don't get any other money whatsoever. That health fund revenue consists of two things, our collection of fees and the tax rate. The more fees we collect, the lower the tax rate is going to be to fund that budget. And again, this goes back, some of us have been around, this goes all the way back to the Bethlehem Steel bankruptcy, when we, it became perfectly clear to the county that we needed to do a better job of correlating the cost of our services to what we charge people for that service. And what we're here to tell you today is that for eight bucks on a birth certificate and $10 on a death certificate, that pays the county for the cost of providing both of those things.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second on this ordinance. With that, though, I will pause, I will pause the, the meeting and I would like to move out of the Board of Commissioners' meeting, now open it into a public meeting. Again, we will go through, this is first reading, and so what we will do here is we will offer anybody in the audience that wishes to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance first time, please do so. We now have the second opportunity to come forward and speak on behalf in favor of this ordinance. Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this ordinance? We will now move to anybody wishing to speak in opposition of this ordinance, please come forward. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in opposition of this ordinance? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in opposition of this ordinance revising the Porter County Board of Health fee structure? With that, we will close public hearing. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll be back at the June 13 meeting for second reading.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Nancy, you stay right there. I just saw that. Go ahead, Nancy, you can, you have the floor.
Sure.
And the seat.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Letty Zapata and I are here today on behalf of the Porter County Health Department to ask for your approval and support to run a collection drive to benefit the Porter County Animal Shelter. We would like to run a collection drive to parallel with the opening of the new shelter during the timeframe of June 1 through June 14. In doing this, we would like to distribute some collection bins and flyers and so forth throughout some of the county buildings and hopefully run a successful collection for them. We've also prepared some flyers upon your approval today that we'd like to hand out. May I approach the bench?
Sure. Thanks.
We have a lot of fun things planned to try to get as many employees and the public involved as possible.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you both for, for doing this.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Has Tony seen this? This is all.
No, she hasn't, yeah. And we will, we will definitely get her in on that.
Like to open up the floor for any?
Yes.
I'm just glad to know I'm not the only ones feeding my dog peanut butter.
They love it.
I really appreciate you doing this. My only thing would be to check with Tony and make sure she needs all the things you're asking her.
Sure, absolutely. I originally sent her a flyer. I spoke to Tony a while back. We communicated via phone and also email. So I sent her a preliminary form, but this, of course, is a lot nicer and prettier than what I sent her, so.
And it is very nice.
Well, it is.
It's great stuff.
Lot of good info.
Have you given any thought of how, how often you're going to be emptying, is it going to be emptied every day?
Well, our plan is to try to get someone who we can work with in each one of the county buildings who can kind of let us know where we're at as far as the items that are collected. And then we, Health Department representatives will go and collect that stuff and, and keep it all together.
Yeah, if you, if you could, if you could collect that every day to make sure you're not left there overnight, it'd be helpful.
Absolutely.
Do we need a motion?
We need, the floor is open.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to request to hold a collection drive to benefit the Porter County Animal Shelter on behalf of the Health Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
IT, Don Welzen, Mr. IT, come forward. We've been meeting with you a lot lately. He's just excited about that, too.
I asked Scott to step up here because he's going to, in case he had any questions on his copy machine that we want to purchase.
Okay.
We talked a couple of weeks ago about the storage issue that I had at the courthouse, and I'd just like to read this brief explanation of what happened. On 5:40 a.m. on April 27th, our VM storage unit had a failure bringing down the virtual devices and servers for all users at the courthouse. This is the same storage unit we talked about in March that needed to be replaced this year. Fortunately, we were able to bring the storage unit back online and had all users and servers up by 9:30. We're looking at probably $30,000 to replace this. I do have $124,000 left in CCD, but I just wanted to make sure that the commissioners were aware of what that balance was. This is the money that has to last us till the end of the year, so. Just as a side note, that the majority of our equipment that we have in place now is anywhere from three to seven years old, and a lot of it does need to be replaced. So we're looking at other things when come.
Can you tell me the balance one more time?
124.
124. And Don, you're also, based on our meeting, you're also putting together a plan for what it would cost us to buy ourselves out of this.
Correct. We're putting a plan together and it's going to be reflected in my 2018 budget.
Budget, right. So we're, we're trying to set the table for next year already, and we're working towards that, so, thank you.
Okay. The next thing on the list was the copy machine for the Memorial Opera House.
This is a real big one.
It's larger than what we have, but not huge. We have about a $26,000 printing budget that we use every year for playbills, season brochures, all of that. We're outsourcing a lot of these things to print houses. The issue is, is it costs about $1.08 per playbill to print, and we're throwing away or recycling a lot of them at the end of the show runs. And when you add that up over the course of five performances, five main stage shows per year, it's a lot of money that we're throwing away.
You don't order fewer because the price?
Because the price goes up, so you have to order in bulk in order to get a price break. And with mailing out and all of that sort of thing, we're, we're seeing a lot of wasted dollars. So in order to help with some of that, I think that if we can move these things in-house, we will probably see a lot less waste in the future. Right now, we're operating at a probably 10 to 15% wasted money. I'd like to get that down to like zero, but, you know, a lot, lot less if we move in-house.
And how old's the copier you got there now?
I believe it's five or six years old. It got there before I did.
End of useful life?
I, I think it's at the end of useful life for the Opera House. We have Adams Remco out there quite a bit doing repairs, and I think there's some frustration because we're trying to get the printer to do things that it's not made to do.
Oh.
Posters and large mailings and things like that, so.
Our plan is to move that to the IT department, since we don't have a copy machine in our department.
Oh, okay.
And we don't, we probably won't use it hardly at all, so hopefully it'll last a couple of years.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No, motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Scott. SB Services.
Yeah, Scott McClure contacted me about this and I called the people down there and I supplied you with all the information that they want to do. We converted to a voiceover IP in 2009. I think a couple of years prior to that, the county had done this before with some other company. But, but thank you, they look at all our internet, our telephone bills and see if we're getting gouged anywhere in the federal taxes or any type like that. There's no fee upfront, the only fee that they'll charge is whatever they can save us, they are going to get like 50% of that. It's, it's no cost, so it's, it's probably a pretty good deal. I don't know what goes on at the Sheriff's Department.
Yeah.
I know that most of my stuff is free, I don't pay any long distance. I do have a couple fax machines that are still analog, which I do pay for, but it's probably a good deal since it's not, it's not going to cost the county anything.
Well, I think from the standpoint that we've never really done that type of dive on our telecommunications costs and everything in a long time. It's an evolving industry, it's an evolving area, and I think it's a good time for us to see where we're at, see if we can have some cost savings. I know in the hotel business that I'm in, telecommunications over the last eight years has taken a dramatic turn. And I know we've used these type of consultants in our company because the, the landscape is changing daily on this type of stuff. And we, you know, they'll be looking at lines, line cost, a lot of different things. So I, I think it's a good audit for us to do right now, to see where we need to be, so.
We've been pretty successful in those audits that we've taken on, like the waste services, and we've, we've discovered we're saving, we're now saving money.
Right. So, any questions, Laura?
No.
All right. SB Services Agreement, I'll open up the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the SB Services Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then your last one.
My last thing, I just want to make the commissioners aware that I'm going to be on the June agenda for the County Council, asking for a additional, I'd like to just read this so to make it part of the record. In June of 2014, every department was asked by the council to cut their 2015 budgets by 10%, or the council will decide on the individual cuts each, for each department. Our previous IT director cut $40,000 out of my consulting line, line item. This line item has been used for a variety of things, some troubleshooting issues that we either have been unable to be solved by the IT staff or out of the realm of expertise to running data cables. Normally, I would have bought retainer hours for this consulting money because I would get a cheaper rate than if I just paid as I needed them. Not only are we responsible for the telephones, but we are also responsible for the telephone paging System, voicemail, auto attendance, and Jabber, which is our messaging system. We also use this line item for security changes on our routers, firewalls, web filter, and email filter. In 2016, we installed voiceover IP system at the Sheriff's Department. This added another 150 telephones and a four-station switchboard that the county IT is responsible for. In addition to telephone systems, we use consulting line item for any Microsoft issues we are not able to do. As an example, we just completed moving our mail system from Exchange 2007 to Exchange 2016. Last month, a vendor requested, which is a software used by a juvenile probation department, requested updates to the IBM iSeries computer so they could upgrade their software. Since I don't have anyone on staff who can do this, I had to outsource this also. As May 1st, 2017, I have $3,042.77 left in my consulting line item. I'd like to request adding back $20,000 of that $40,000 back to my line item.
Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Any other comments or questions from the commissioners?
No, I mean with the, with the addition of the, all the phones now with the Sheriff's Department project, I mean, there's no way around this. I motion to approve.
I second.
Uh, we have a-
You say this every day about how IT is getting head on with-
Yeah, we're, you know, our IT department in this county has deferred a lot of expenses over the years. I think the other thing that I see, that I've noticed just in the last four months, and I know we've talked about it, is a lot of the malware issues, a lot of the security, cybersecurity issues. Governments are now being targeted. We obviously do not have people in this building that are cybersecurity experts, so from that perspective, we have to go through our consultant line item again. And I just feel that this is something that I think we're going to be dealing with more and more in the future because it looks like it's not letting up. And I think since we're responsible for maintaining and keeping all that data safe, we need to be proactive rather than reactive. So, um, with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I would suggest that you start talking and calling and talking to the council members so they're briefed and they understand what we're trying to do here. It's, we're not trying to throw another additional at them that you're, you're at the end of your rope here and it's May.
Correct.
So, um, just do what you can. If you need any help from us, let us know.
Okay. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up, we've got the Cessar scheduled to move back to our network Memorial Day weekend.
Oh.
So hopefully all that'll go fine, and they'll be back on board with us again, so looking forward to it. Thank you.
Good job on that, Don. Thank you. Facilities, Matt Steckley, come forward. Quote for new lawnmower, which can also be used for snow removal.
So this is, we went out and got three quotes for a new mower, which will add a total of three mowers to our fleet. We have a third grounds guy from a restructure earlier last year, so the need is there, and we've taken grounds and snow in-house, and this is kind of the last piece of the puzzle to help us get there. Dunland Schools uses this, Valpo uses this equipment, and we've had conversations with them. We've gotten reviews, feedback, pros, cons, and it's a, it's a good investment on a piece of equipment that's going to last a long time and help us out.
Matt, my only question, you got three quotes. They're obviously all got to be talking about the same thing because they're so tight. Just, my only concern was that some of these are a little bit more, have a little bit more detail than the other, but you've verified that, like, for the three quotes-
Only on one, I see weight brackets and suitcase weights and the- That dealer happened to go further in what it comes with. The others just left that out.
All right, but you were getting low levels of that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It was the same scope to all three of them.
That's why I just wanted to make sure.
Are these all three local vendors?
Yes, and Riggs is actually the one that was the lowest we're asking to award, too.
It's Riggs, Don Bales, and HFS Tractor Sales and Service.
Riggs is the lowest?
Correct.
Motion to approve Riggs.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to improve a new lawnmower, which can also be used for snow removal in the winter. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. And then just a quick update as we speak now, the Master Gardeners Club, Commissioner Biggs, I know you got involved with this, they're actually over there now. I met with them. We've had several meetings. The layout, they designed the two boxes in front of the courthouse. 90% of what's going in those boxes is perennials, a little bit of annuals that we'll take care of, but we're going to have years of, of really, it was a nice layout, it was a nice design. They did a fantastic job. A lot of them are retired and older, and they're just a bunch of green thumb. So I met with their team. My team's over there assisting. I did offer and inform them the county would buy them lunch today. They're all over there working all day. So somehow I did say we can probably do lunch for them, but just wanted to say that publicly would really give thanks to them, and I know you helped get that started, and it's excellent. It's really going to look good.
Cool.
Thank you, Matt.
I think lunch is all right, Matt.
Thank you. If not, I'll pick it up. Well, yeah.
Good luck. I hope you check with me.
Vicky will walk you through that 74 step process.
I'm just going to get my money out just in case. And let me know, let me know when I send you the bill about lunch. We'll start a collection now.
We can't do that.
No, we can't.
But let me know, Matt. I'm chipping in.
I'll chip in.
Again.
Yeah.
I'll tell you right now, chip in.
Yeah, I think so. I'll just have to give it.
We've been down this road.
Yeah. Yeah. Vicky, the auditor, Vicky Erbank's going to give us an update on the Lao system.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
This is the update I have been eagerly awaiting to give you. As you remember, last, late last summer, you approved a contract for us to move to a new payroll financial system. We had our initial data pull, our initial data conversion late last fall, and in the last few months, we have been deep in data conversion and poring over various fund numbers and payroll data and all sorts of data that we need to make sure that we have a smooth transition. Finally, we think that the stars have aligned, our initial testing and our parallel payroll has been completed successfully, and so we are going through another training this week. And if all works well with what we call our final data pool, which is scheduled for next week, we are on schedule, hopefully, to run our next payroll after the May 30th payroll, the June 12th pay date entirely on the new system. So we will be converting over to Lao within the next few weeks. We've already used Lao Financial for the beginning of the year tax reports, but now in terms of using it for fund, payroll, budgeting, we're about ready to proceed. And I've been asked about training for departments. We're still working on the training schedule, but we hope to roll this out slowly and systematically with the departments. We're going to begin by giving them their new department numbers and their new fund numbers. It's going to be a dramatic change over what we've been dealing with. Then we're going to show them how to enter claims, and I've already shown a few people how to do that process. Then we're going to move into the payroll, and then we're going to move into the budgeting process. So we will have, hopefully, the new system up and running for the upcoming budget hearings. And that brings me to the next issue that is really, I feel, sort of your baby, and that's the time and attendance system. As you remember, last year when we moved towards the new payroll financial system, you also endorsed the concept of moving to a time and attendance system. And I would like your guidance or direction or your commitment for us to proceed with that.
Absolutely.
We didn't want to do that until we got the infrastructure in place for the payroll system. It wouldn't have worked otherwise.
Would that be an additional cost for that?
Yes.
And, you know, I think what we probably need to do is have some meetings with you because we're also in the final stages of updating our human resources manual here. And if we're going to move to this, this is obviously something that we need to go back to our manual and make sure that it's reflected in there that we have this. So I think it comes at a good time, at least from an implementation standpoint. As you know, the dollars are always tough up here, but I think it'd be worth getting together, and maybe when we do get together, you can sort of show us some of these wonderful reports that we're going to be able to look at, too, from this new system, so.
And whenever you want to see it, we have it uploaded already on the main screen here if you want to take a tour of the play data right now. We're going, like I said, we're going to have the final pull next week, and then it all gets converted over early June.
Okay.
So whenever you want a demo, we're ready.
Okay. I think we need to, we need to continue the dialogue, and we need to figure out where this is going to work with our HR manual, and it's a timing thing at that point, so.
What's the ballpark figure?
For time and attendance only?
Yep.
Okay, the one-time cost is anywhere from $75,000 to $90,000. It depends on what kind of devices and how many you want. And the committee that we had in place last summer looked at some of the devices. Some departments wanted a different type, and it, so it really depends on what type of device we go with. But that would be a one-time cost of $75,000 to up to around $90,000, and then the annual maintenance fee, and it was quoted at $36,000 annually.
What in the world are they maintaining? Costs $36,000 a year on a, on a time card?
Welcome to the government. It's software.
It's software.
It's the software.
It's software.
That showers it for me.
Well, we'll get with you, Vicky. I would also make sure that you're, as you're talking with council members, too, that you plant that seed with them because we want to get there together.
Okay, absolutely.
From, from the cost perspective, so.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Um, is that, now we move into Plan Commission? Okay. Before we recess Plan Commission, I would like to sort of give a little bit of an update on something that I know the Board of Commissioners and the council have been working on together. The Foundation Steering Committee has had an opportunity to meet about a week and a half ago, and that would be both members from the council and members from the commissioner's office, and also both parties were represented there as well. The meeting was very beneficial, and one of the issues discussed was the charitable giving, the charitable giving component of the foundation. The Steering Committee discussed the creation of a comprehensive process and application for charitable, charitable giving. The committee believes the application and process would be available for the foundation members to review and approve by the first quarter of 2018. So what we're basically saying is, many of you've noticed here recently that we have some not-for-profits that are, I guess, very strongly wanting to get in line to get at some of this money. As of right now, based on where we're at with the county and where we're at with the financial, just the foundation starting off, we're just growing. We're just starting this, we're just starting this. So I think a lot of people have some of this money spent already. We're, we're trying to be a little bit more prudent in how we go about this, and so we're starting to meet and putting the processes together for this to happen. But in the same breath, we need to continue to, you know, be diligent, and, and we need to continue to work through growing this endowment and making it something more for all of us to benefit from in the future. Just, just to remind everybody, the legislation was passed last year, and we started investing the money the end of last year. So we're very early on. We're in the infant stages of this endowment and this foundation. So we're, we're going to continue to work with the council members to put a process together that everybody can trust and be thankful for, but in the same breath, we also need to be patient, and we need to allow this endowment to continue to grow because as we all know, when you're tied to the stock market, you can have good days and you can have bad days. And what we're doing is we're planning for the bad days because that's what governments do, so.
Well, responsible governments.
And, and so that's sort of, I think, and that, that came very clearly from the council as well as the commissioners, but we're just going to have to give this thing a little time to get its feet, and when it, when the time comes, we'll be ready to talk and, and to discuss these things as we go forward. So that's about that on that. So any other comments from my fellow board members?
That's very well said, Jeff. I think that is extremely premature to do discussing who may be getting what and how much. We are nowhere near at, at, at that place where we, we can make an intelligent decision on that, on those sorts of things, so be patient, like you said.
Okay, with that, we will recess. No, we don't recess. We just go right into it. We're going into our Plan Commission meeting now. We have one item on that agenda, and go ahead, Bob Thompson, take the floor.
This is Resolution 17-03 of the Porter County Plan Commission. Petitioner is requesting a zoning map amendment from I-2 General Industry District to RR Rural Residential District. This was heard at the Plan Commission at their April 26th meeting, and a public hearing was held, and they forwarded to the Board of Commissioners with a favorable recommendation.
What was, was that a unanimous vote, Bob, or was it?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Anything Commissioner Blaney you'd like to add, or, because I know you sit on that board?
No, it was unanimous.
Okay.
I just, I mean, just real briefly, it's, it's an odd area. At some point, this was zoned I-2 probably back when we originally did zoning. It was going to be by a railroad spur that either is not there or never went in.
Right, it's by the Canadian National Airport, Canadian National Railroad, and also by the airport, so it was looked upon as being industrial there. They're ambitious.
And all the surrounding property has developed into rural residential.
Right.
That's why we have somebody coming in, coming in, wanting the bound zone from I-2 to RR.
And what is the, the purpose of the rezoning?
So they can build a house.
So they can build a house. They cannot build a home in I-2 zoning district. It has to be one of the residential districts.
Well, you ought to be able to build your house when you want to.
I agree, but not in the I-2.
Not in I. Not in I. You can zone there.
Motion to approve.
We have, we have a motion.
Hold a public hearing.
Yeah.
You have to hold a public hearing.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
I thought we just did, Bob. All right, we're going to recess. We're going to move out of the commissioners' meeting, and we're going to now open up to a public hearing. We're going to give, anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this rezoning, please come forward, state your name and the reason for the rezoning. Come on forward, sir.
I'm Terry Easton. I am an attorney in trust. And on behalf of the property owner who couldn't be here today, Mr. Bossos, and this has been a extremely difficult situation for Mr. Bossos in that he bought this property, 17.80 acres, with representation that it was agriculture, and it is for tax purposes, taxes agriculture land. He went to apply for a building permit and found, of course, that it was zoned I-2, and he couldn't get a building permit-
No.
-without rezoning the property. So we filed a petition for rezoning, and the Plan Commission was good enough to recommend it on to you. The property owner has been delayed in his building process. I see this as first reading. Is there a possibility that we can get to a second and third reading?
We only need two, right?
We need two.
Can we, no?
Can't waive it?
No.
None of the rezone.
Okay. But I think it makes sense, it makes good sense. It kind of was the wake-up call, if you will, for people in the neighborhood in that we had some folks come in and say, well, gee, how, are you going to be building a subdivision or whatever? And they explained, no, it's just the one residence on 17 acres. And those folks got educated by Scott and members of the Plan Commission that, in fact, this I-2 zoning could be a problem in the future for those folks who are north of this property. And so I think you're going to be seeing some other petitions to come in for RR zoning to fill in the gap, if you will, and eliminate some of the potential for I-2 development between the residential uses that are there. So we would hope that you would consider it favorably.
Thank you. I'd like to make the second call for anybody wishing to come forward and speak in behalf of this rezoning. Third and final time, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this rezoning ordinance. We will now open up the floor for first call for anybody to come up and speak against this rezoning ordinance. Second time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance. Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezoning ordinance. With that, I'll close the public meeting. We'll now entertain- We'll now entertain the floor to the Board of Commissioners.
I believe there's a motion on the floor, Mr. President.
Oh.
There is a motion.
There was a motion to approve.
Yep, all right, my bad. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries first reading. Second reading will be at our June 13th Commissioners' meeting. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Valparaiso Elks George Primits Flag Day Chairman. I don't think George is here. I will read that out. A request to use the north side of the courthouse grounds to hold the Valparaiso Elks Annual Flag Day event. The event will be held on Wednesday, June 14th, 2017, from 5:00 to 7:30. The Elks will bring their own sound system and chairs, so.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. With that, I believe that ends our agenda for the day, and this board stands in recess. Thank you.